It should be in now.
Okay, and the last thing is because this is a full board meeting, we need to call the roll. So you have that on the record. And I have that up so I can do it, or Wendy, our board coordinator is here. I don't know if you have that handy Wendy, you could call that as well.
Oh, and if you do have it, I would appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, I didn't, last minute, so Ann Grabitt is, excuse absence, Bob Salinger.
I'm here.
Commissioner Laurie Stegman. Corky Collier, Collier, sorry.
Here.
Counselor Dave Ripma.
Here.
Eric Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Shirley Craddock.
Present.
Eric Molander.
Here.
James Allison.
Here.
John Niama.
Here.
John L. Bell. Mary Helen Kincaid.
I'm here, but I may have to leave early.
Okay, thank you. Michael Jordan.
Here.
Steve Fancher.
Here.
And Tanny Stephenson.
Here.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Colin. Well, while you're paying attention, I'll do my best crack at sort of reintroducing the purpose of these work sessions by calling and others feel free to chime in and correct course here as needed. I think most of the folks who are on this call, well, a slight majority of the folks who've been on this call have been part of past revenue work sessions, or sorry, the previous revenue committee. Now I have lost my confidence. Okay, the, my understanding from Colin and staff is that we kind of hit a center of gravity where there were enough people on the revenue committee that it really didn't make sense to convene both a separate committee and then bring, bring those recommendations back to the full board. So the goal is to have these work sessions in between your formal board meetings. We don't anticipate doing any voting here. My understanding, Colin, is that everybody's invited, but you understand that folks may not be able to consistently attend, that didn't plan to be on the revenue, the revenue committee. And we're going to frame these just as a work session to have some additional time between your meetings to be able to dig into the details around these revenue issues and building the model that we'll talk more about today. How does that sound, friends? That's a lot of nodding for a Wednesday afternoon at 1 o'clock. I'm gonna keep going here. I'm gonna introduce the Echo Northwest team, starting with myself here, which I probably should have done already. I'm Sarah O'Brien with Climate Partnership. We're serving as kind of collaborative coordinator and facilitator to the revenue structure conversations here. My colleague Sarah Rich from Echo Northwest is dialing in from the Phoenix Airport today, which is why she is masked. Sarah, do you want to, are you able to introduce yourself?
Sure, that's why I am Sarah. It's the project manager, project director at Echo Northwest, managing this project and keeping everybody on the consultant team on the same page as much as possible. And I, as, I'm in a far corner here in the Phoenix Airport and I have a cup of tea here, so I may, if I'm asked a little to smile and say hello at times, but I'll try to keep it up so that, and hopefully it isn't, you all can hear me okay with it, with it on, so.
Yeah.
Glad to be here with everybody here despite coming from Phoenix.
Thanks, Sarah. You're living on the edge. Nick, do you want to introduce yourself to the group next?
Sure, thanks. Nick Popanuk with Tiberia Solutions, a public finance specialist supporting Echo Northwest on the project.
Okay, thanks, guys. I don't see anybody else from that team with us here today. I know staff and board generally pretty know each other pretty well. I'm gonna ask folks who haven't joined the revenue committee real quick to introduce yourselves. John Niama, are you available to introduce yourself real quick there?
Yes, I'm John Niama. I'm the Public Works Director at City of Wood Village.
Welcome.
Been part of this since before it was called Levy Ready and kind of integrated into this, and City of Wood Village is one square mile, so we have a little stake in this, so happy to be part of it.
You have a lovely community, too. Bob Salinger, do you have a chance to introduce yourself as well? Okay, well, Bob Salinger I happen to know is with Portland Audubon Society. I imagine folks on the board already know him.
Yeah, that is correct. I was having trouble with my screen here. Yes, you got it right. I'll leave it there.
I'm just gonna introduce as much awkward humor into this meeting as I possibly can while we move forward today. Apologize, folks. Is there any, anyone else on the board that has not been part of these revenue conversations previously? No, that's what I thought. Okay, well, I will dive into presentation then and talk you guys through first the intent of what we're trying to achieve here today. Do folks see my slides now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna remind us, I'm gonna take a couple of minutes here to just kind of remind us where we are in space and time. I hope this will be helpful for folks that are new to this process, but I suspect it might also be helpful to folks that are not as new to this process, just because we meet once a month and you probably have some other things going on in your lives, and it might be a little bit difficult to remember where we are on the process that we first talked about several months ago. So in a minute, I'm gonna open it up and talk about sort of longer term process and what we're trying to achieve with this body of work, but I just want to remind folks that we're part of these conversations. At our last meeting we did, if you remember, Sarah presented us with these sort of big buckets of revenue options to model. We did our best effort at kind of a final sorting of those revenue options and sent them up to the board. The board wasn't able to move forward with a vote to finalize the revenue options to model. And so we decided we could make good use of this opportunity to have this work session, this conversation together today, to do a little prep for when we are able to move forward. We anticipate you all have at your meeting next Tuesday, I believe it is, the 22nd, having a chance to move forward with that vote. Nick's been working on getting all of his ducks in a row to make sure that he's able to complete the modeling process once that vote moves forward. In the meantime, we thought it might be helpful to sit down and talk about what you would like to see in the way of the whole results and how we can share those in a way that helps facilitate this process going forward. So that's what we're going to be focused on today is kind of getting ready for, at our March work session for Nick and the team to be able to share those initial model results. So we anticipate your board meeting next week to include that vote. We've been working with staff on kind of a big picture roadmap of the transition timeline that's been implied by sort of the effort that we're making now to try to aim towards a 2023 transition timeline rather than the longer term that we previously talked about. So we have some, a little detail to share on that today, but we'll dive into a much broader discussion at the board meeting. And the MCDB staff always have all kinds of interesting business for you, so I'm sure there will be additions to that. Um, so that's kind of where we are in space and time. Today, our objectives with this agenda are first and very shortly to give you kind of that balcony view of what we see in terms of the next year plus of revenue focused work here. I'm hoping that we're working towards with staff and our team, building, building you a little kind of roadmap graphic there that we can pop up at the beginning of every meeting and just remind folks where we are at this process. So you can see what are the steps ahead of us, what are the points for different conversations and sort of how are we, how are we working on pushing this boulder up the hill, so to speak? And then the bulk of our conversation today will be focused on preparation for those first round model results and the Echo team, Nick and the Echo team will give us a lot more detail. So that's, that will be quite a bit of presentation and discussion. Okay, Colin, anything else to add before we dive in? This is what I see as a balcony view, right? So as we sat down, the consulting team with staff folks over the last couple of weeks and actually almost, I think, a couple of months now, we've been working on this. We really thought it would be helpful to have this sort of structured set of steps that we could all see ourselves going through to get to this timeline that we have discussed and that Jim kind of helped us set as a goal for, you know, July 1st, 2023 is a call for dissolution and start of a transition into the new district structure. This is just the revenue side of that. And so at the next board meeting, we'll be discussing how, you know, the development of programs and, and, you know, the costs and sort of the way that programs get implemented over time feeds into that. This is just focused on the work that this revenue, these revenue work sessions will be addressing going forward. And Evan, I understand that you and Emily are still working on some edits to this, to this graphic, but we thought it would be nice to kind of pop this up, give you guys a few minutes to walk through this with us, and then ask if you have any feedback or course corrections for us while we, while we fix this into something that we can use to keep track of ourselves going forward. So you can see, I've got a two-screen problem here. Hang on just a minute. But very counterintuitively, we start stepping at the lower left side of the screen here, so maybe that's something that we need to fix, but we're trying to build towards, we're trying to build the foundation that we need to have a stable and, and, and long-lasting and, you know, all the other criteria that we established revenue structure for this new district. We've gone through this first step of identifying potential sources of revenue and the decision criteria that we're going to use to evaluate those against. So folks will remember, we talked about those criteria. We've been working on defining them. We know there are some like equity that we still have some additional work to sort of dive in and be clear about exactly what we mean by those criteria, but that's what you'll see us talking about, sort of presenting. The way we present initial model results will be tied to the criteria that we previously considered and talked about as a board in terms of how we make decisions about which revenue sources should be included in the, in the district's long-term structure. Over the next couple of months here, we'll be talking about the different strengths and weaknesses and also ways to blend those revenue sources. So you may remember Sarah and others talking about this idea of a layer cake. So we know that any one of these revenue sources individually would create significant strengths and weaknesses if the district were to depend on it entirely, but we know that by carefully sort of blending or braiding those different layers together, we feel confident that we can create a revenue structure that emphasizes the strengths and mitigates the weaknesses of different revenue structures as much as possible. So today and with the initial model results that we'll discuss in March, we'll be really focused on sort of single stream version of that, but we wanted to remind folks that the next conversation after that will be how can we blend those and what are some different alternative scenarios that we can use to try to combine those in a way that achieves the outcomes and meets the criteria that we've identified. At that point, we'll want to circle back to a conversation that I know staff and the Echo team are having around overview of program benefits and costs. We'll take a deeper dive into the equity considerations. And we'll also check in with staff who have been working on sort of continually refining our cost estimates so that we can make sure as we're building a revenue structure, we're not doing that in complete isolation of a discussion of both the costs that the districts expected to incur going forward, but also the benefits that it will provide, because that's part of how we make the case for, for this funding package that we're trying to create together, right? This is where we started to hit some really key deadlines, and Jim, I remember you using the metaphor in the past of kind of one of those gates at the airport. Sarah, maybe you've seen one of these where if you go through this gate, you can get back, but it becomes progressively more difficult to get back and change your mind and start reconsidering previous decisions again. You have to go through security again at that point, and that's no minor thing these days. So in July 2020, July of this year, 2022, we're hoping to have kind of a discussion draft proposed revenue structure that would be that sort of layer cake of how, you know, our collective best shot at how these different revenue structure sources could be combined to meet our needs. That isn't a vote on the board's part necessarily, but that's, you know, a comfort level for the board to go forward and say, all right, let's put together a little roadshow. Let's talk to our partner governments, our partner NGOs, our community-based organizations, and start sharing this graph with partners that we think might need or want an opportunity to weigh in on this thing going forward. So that gives us a fair amount of time before we ask the board to actually dive in and make a vote on a revenue structure. So this is probably not the biggest turnstile necessarily in July, but it is a point where we're hoping that we can hit that target with, with a structure that we can propose and talk about with a broader set of stakeholders and partners, just so we have that gap for feedback, refining, bringing back in kind of a synthesized version of the feedback we're hearing in those roadshows to this group, and kind of refining and add into a preferred alternative of this, of this layer cake, so to speak. That would hopefully land us in November with an opportunity for the board to approve a revenue structure. That would allow you to sort of set things in motion for a July transition or a July call for dissolution to be on time to sort of make it to your May 2023 election with all your ducks in a row, with all your pieces that you need to be able to get there. There would be, as I understand it, and staff are more than welcome to step in and correct me here, a opportunity or a timeline there for the board to approve the revenue structure to make a call for election of the permanent board. And then there's a lot of details that I know that, you know, Colin and the team are already diving in and working on. What would be, depending on different revenue structures that might come out of this process, what does that look like? What are the IGAs needed to implement that? The mechanisms needed that might be needed to exchange funds between existing entities? Financial planning, budgeting, so on and so forth. You have a timeline there where if you're gonna make it to that May 2023 election with, you know, your dress and your heels on or whatever the right metaphor is for that one, that you, you need to collect your first dollar before that happens. And so that's a timeline that's referenced in your legislation that, that sometime between your approval of your revenue structure and that May 2023 election is, is when you actually need to begin collection and have the mechanisms in place to do that with at least one of your revenue sources. That lands you at the May 2023 election, and if all goes as according to plan up to that point, then a sort of a logical time to begin that transition process and for the board to officially call for dissolution of the existing districts would seem to be the beginning of your fiscal year in July 2023. So that's a lot of information packed into one structure. I think one of the things that we've really highlighted in our conversations with staff, we've heard back from staff and sort of figuring out how to build this, because Colin, Emily, you, Evan, you guys, Jim, these are, these are the things that came out of your heads, and we just put them in a, in a pretty graphic here. This seems like an achievable timeline, but it's tight, right? And there are several gates here where if we don't make it through, we'll need to reconsider this timeline. And there are several points where, you know, we're having a discussion now. It feels a bit high stakes, but it is actually still relatively early in the process, and we have this process where we're gonna develop a draft, shop it around, have opportunities for conversations with all the individual jurisdictions and, and sort of key partners, and come back and have that conversation again. So the goal here is to see how you're building up from a foundation to a potential for, for, for these specific actions that need to take place. I want to give folks an opportunity first on staff, Jim and your staff, to correct course or anything we might have gotten mixed up in my presentation here. Or add anything else that you want to, to make sure we mention, and then I'll go to the group for questions or feedback. Jim?
Thank you for the clarity, and again, regardless of the actual timeframe, this is the sequence that I think you all should be really focused on and trying to keep this in mind as we're making individual decisions. And I hope this helps you see where the board has an awful lot of influence on what actually is going to happen at multiple stages in this process. So thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. That's an excellent point. Colin?
Yeah, so again, thank you. And I think, thinking of this as the balcony view and sort of these big milestones, these are the gates that we need to pass through, and we'll continue to refer back to these. And on Tuesday, February 22nd, when we have the full board meeting, we'll be expanding upon this. This is really our critical path, especially around the revenue development. We'll be adding some more information around program development, how we'll be doing some of the cost estimates for flood safety, environment, emergency management, cultural history, and other pieces that need to go into this whole pie or multi-layered cake. So there'll be additional information on Tuesday, building upon this critical path. Thank you, Sarah.
Exactly. Thanks so much. Colleagues, any, any questions, feedback, course corrections for us here? Shirley?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate having this chart to help us see the picture. I want to be sure I'm understanding it correctly. So in November 2022, the board will approve the revenue structure and call for an election. So there won't be any revenue, any money available until after the election in May. Is that correct? And then, and even then, that wouldn't be available until July 1st. So how does, how do you start implementing budgets before July 1st?
Colin or Kelly, do you want to take that?
Take the first crack at that, and then actually, I think Kelly may have just come off mute, though. You, you can do that, Kelly, if you want to.
Sure, I'll, I'll take a crack at it, and then you can fill in, Colin, if I've missed anything. So I think that's correct. In terms of the geo bond, we wouldn't have that money available immediately if we did geo bond at the May election. But before we can actually hold that election of the permanent board, the district needs to have begun collecting on a revenue stream. And so, you know, a likely way that that could go would be through a utility fee or service fee model. And that, that election can't be held without that money coming in. So the way that I have termed this for staff, looking at this, is that it's, it's sort of riskier the closer that we get to that election without having collected a first dollar.
So where in this chart do we start collecting money? I see it says board approval of revenue structure. Is that when we are actually approving, that we are actually going to put into place a utility fee or whatever it is? Is that where that occurs in that blue box?
Yeah, so the, the board does need to approve the utility structure, and I think what we're working on simultaneously is looking at collection, how, how that will go and trying to get any collection mechanisms in place so that they're ready to go simultaneously at the time that the board is ready to approve the revenue structure. And so if it turns out that the board is ready earlier than November, that would be great, but we're definitely thinking about that, planning for that, and we'll bring you some options as we kind of learn what's available and how, how it makes no sense to do that.
If you don't mind, so as I see, as I understand this, I'm, I'm actually asking you to make sure I, I understand it correctly. So the, let's say it is YouTube, if he goes into place, that will become the operating funds for the agency. And then as we move forward into May, we would likely, if a geo bond would, then that is the funding that will be able to be the match for the work that will be funded by Congress and the Corps of Engineers. Is that correct?
I'm gonna let Colin answer that.
Yes, that'll be a part of it. So I think the geo bond will be addressing a number of, you know, modernization efforts that we need to address, including the local match for PMLS, our levy certification projects that are not included, some other projects that are needed for the districts as well as projects that address the new mandates of the district. And so those include some climate adaptation, resiliency, as well as incorporation of environmental projects into all of this work.
Thanks. I just want to note in the chat there, Evan had also flagged, we were actually mid, mid revision in this figure this morning, so we will add that first dollar collection in with the next version of this, you see. And, and Mary Helen, I did also see your question. We'd be happy to send this figure out once we get those changes made to it. And anything else folks would like us to add to it? Eric?
Yes, Sarah, a quick question for you. We will start billing our, the people in the districts based on the utility model sometime before May 2023. So they're likely to first see this bill when?
So one thing that we need to work out is that we can't, there's no double dipping here, right? And so the current board, the current districts, once we have the election of the permanent board, the permanent board can call for the dissolution of the existing district, the 12 months, up to 12-month process. One thing that's really critical for the work that we do is to make sure that there's no gaps in receiving that funding. So that's one of the pieces that we're working on as far as the mechanics of that are really important. And so we'll be able to provide an update to the board on some different options around keeping funds in reserve or some other way. And then we'll also be able to provide an update on what those revenue collection methods are. So there's probably through partnership with other entities that already have utilities in place, but that's something that we're working on. So I have a more thorough update with some options to come, but we don't have all those mechanics worked out right now.
Yeah, I want to remind folks that we're reading tea leaves to a significant extent here, and part of the reason we wanted to map this out was just to give you some visibility on the process going forward. Part was to kind of test, you know, this July 2023 deadline and see what pieces of a puzzle need to be in place in order to make that a possibility. You all haven't even given the Echo team permission to model these yet, and so we're, we're really reading tea leaves to be able to get to this level of detail, but Kelly, it looks like, it looks like you have something to add to that as well, and then I'll.
Yeah, I just wanted to add an extremely fine point to what Colin just said, which is all correct. In terms of the double dipping question, there is some concern there, but I think we will still have opportunity for the drainage districts to have income coming in in their traditional methods to, to finish out the purposes that they still do serve that are different from the purposes of the urban district. So I don't think that there's gonna be necessarily, or there doesn't have to be a clean cutoff line of, you know, okay, the new district has its permanent board now, so the urban, or so that the drainage districts can't collect funds anymore, because there will be some differences still in the services that are being provided. So just tiny little thing.
There's, there's a lot, there's a lot behind each of these steps, right? And so I think the, the reminder that we're looking far into the future here, and also, you know, just to realize that staff see all the steps that are needed in between these steps and are working on kind of a shared joint work plan, as I understand. So if you look at that start implementing bucket, there's a lot of work that has already started to be able to get folks to a place where regardless of the decision of the board in sort of determining that revenue structure, they'll be well-prepared to create implement, an implementation path that doesn't create the kinds of challenges that Kelly and, and Colin just described that we're trying to avoid here. So it's, it's not like November, all of a sudden, we start talking about implementation. The staffer, the staffer working on a work plan that maps us out to make sure that we get to that deadline well, well, well in advance. Any other questions or comments? Anything we could reflect on this to make the, the road a little clearer for us? Yes, Carol?
Thank you. I apologize. Don't mean to be dominating this, but I, something, I, it's more, I need your, the group's advice than as not a suggestion. So because this is going to be a new board, I would think you'd want a separate line, stair-step line on regarding the, the election process. Because if someone is going to run for office in May, they're gonna probably, I think it probably opens in September, the filing date. And I mean, it opens and then it closes again in March, I think. So those dates will need just to be taken into consideration. And possibly this group might want to do some outreach to the, to the area, to the district to make sure that, you know, the community is aware, there's going to be an election, I mean, these are new, newly elected people, it's a new agency. So I don't know, that's a more of a public relations effort, and, but I'm, I'm open to, to hear what others people think about that. Maybe there's a bunch of savvy people out there that don't need to have that kind of information, but, but I do know if you're gonna be, want to run for office in May, you're gonna have to be ready to go in March, by March, and that means you have a campaign and you have a way to outreach out to the public and all those things. So to me, that's a fairly important timeline to pay attention to.
Yeah, that makes sense. Evan, that's, that's kind of linked with some of the communications planning work that we've talked about, but haven't hit, I think, that level of detail yet. Did you want to respond to that, Evan?
Yeah, um, thank you, Counselor Craddock. Those are really good points. This graphic is very, very, very draft, and I was surprised to see it put up today.
Oh, I'm sorry, Evan. I thought we had that understanding.
That's okay. So we are gonna add, we, we have a couple of big, those like solid pillar boxes that definitely need to be added, including some stuff around the revenue collection and the, the election-related stuff. So I think you're gonna see that. On, on your point about candidates, just a couple things that we've talked about and thought about. One thing, the staff can't recruit candidates. That's one of the things we'll have to be really careful about, and so really glad you're bringing it up, because that will be something that we really need your help with. Unfortunately, we don't think that this will be like city council and metro. It'll be a lot more like the, you know, the soil and water conservation districts where trying to get one candidate to run is, you know, an awesome success. And so as long as they file by March, you know, that, that'll be, I don't think we're gonna see super competitive races at first, but we're definitely talking about, and one of the things that we're, we're talking about quite a bit right now, because we're getting ready to bring you all budgets, is how much communication and when can we do that communication in the coming year? is how much communication and when can we do that communication in the coming year, assuming that there will be a ballot measure on the ballot in early and candidates, if this all works out perfectly in May of next year. So you'll see all of that coming forward in your budget.
I can reply. I obviously recognize that staff can't. It's more, I'm thinking out loud here about those of us that are in a much position that I received that would be our responsibility to see, figure out a way to communicate this out. But I, but when you call for an election in November and finally it opens in September, just got to keep think, keep that in mind, how that 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 this calendar, this schedule follows the the election cycle also.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think realistically, there's a set of like six of these that are nested, right? That like in order to get it simple enough to fit on one screen, we've done a revenue focus on this one. We'll zoom out for our board conversation next Tuesday. But then we'll see a bunch of stuff like this that we need to zoom back in on, both to make sure that we have a clear and transparent process, but also just to make sure our timelines really match up. So I think this is something we can certainly dive in. We're about to the limit of what we can fit in a graphic. And so that may be a separate graphic or a set of nested ones or something, but we'll certainly get some some clarifications and amendments to this one.
Sarah, can I ask a question really quick? Councilor Craddock, are you are you thinking that it would? I just want to make sure that your comment isn't that are you thinking that it might make sense to do the call for election a little earlier because you're concerned about the opening? Okay, that's what I thought I heard you saying. So we'll go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with, I think Evan was you saying, you know, the likelihood we're going to have be flooded with candidates is not high. But at the same time, we got to think about the election cycle and keep that in mind. And so, yeah, so when we call for an election that we have the have the election cycle in mind, because so it's this is not as, if this was a mayor of Portland or something, this would be a different, this is not a bit, you know, all that urgent, I just want to point that out and keep just just think of those two timelines need to follow each other as best you can make.
I get it. That's really helpful feedback. Thank you. I'm going to go to Mary Helen here, and then I want to make sure that we hand the mic over pretty quickly to the to the revenue focused conversation after that. Mary Helen, go ahead.
I just want to say yes to everything that Evan and Councilor Craddock said. Because being, I have no clue about filing for election. I can't even find somebody to fill a vacant position on the pen two board, let alone say you're going to be on this even more involved technical board. So I think you have two audiences, maybe you have elected officials and then you have people like me and my neighbors who have a very simplistic view of what someone should do. Don't charge them any more money and keep them dry. And so however that message is purveyed, I've been involved with Levy Ready Columbia since very first day. I don't want to go into a big protracted, I have to give speeches and go talk to people and say things. So if there's some way to for each of the districts to recommend someone or endorse or whatever, I I think from, and I don't know what the other citizen on the other drainage districts, but to run an election just sounds like flying planes to me. And I I don't think you're going to find very many people that want to do that because they haven't been involved from the beginning or even if they've been involved in the last two months. It for a citizen, that's pretty darn complicated when it's not been part of your life. So just sort of when you're going to maybe use landowner meetings or, you know, the little mailers that you send out. But it's it's just, for me, who shows up at a lot of meetings and has gone to a lot of meetings and envy Sarah for two days off of Zoom meetings, running for election is not in my playbook, so. We're having to having to deal with an election. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I'm going to steer us back to revenue here, if I may wield my facilitator's magical gavel here. And I'm going to ask folks, Evan and the team and I will be working on a revised version of this graphic that we'll share with you next time. In the meantime, if you have any other feedback offline in chat, feel free to reach out to any one of us. And thank you for the issues that you did flag. That's very helpful in fixing up our timeline. Okay, are we ready to to start talking about how we talking about how we talk about model results? That sounds really daunting. Nick, are you leading this next section here or is Sarah starting us off?
I'm going to start us off, I think, and Nick, feel free to jump in as we go here. And if at any point it becomes hard to hear me, just, you know, signal. So the purpose of what we're going to be walking through here today is really to get your thoughts, to present how we're going to be showing the results that come out of the model and and get you to start thinking about whether what you're seeing will provide you with the right information to make decisions down the road. You'll see that some of the data that we'll be using to pull into the model, the questions that we think we're trying to answer. And then keep in mind that we're going to be using this information a couple of times along the way. You'll see results from the model at at least two points. And they will, for the first time, will be looking through individual windows at specific revenue options and understanding how each of them looks independent, but recognize recognizing that that won't be what we'll be moving forward with and then revenue structure, that the model will then allow us to combine the different revenue options into us into a structure or several structures in scenarios to compare against each other. And that will come a little bit further down the line. So just wanted to keep that context. This isn't a single, a single, the model results, as you review them, it won't be a single opportunity to look at them and understand them. It will be several different iterations that will move us toward that ultimate revenue structure vote that you saw in the stair step. So as you look, as we go through these slides, just keep in mind as you're reflecting on them, what might be missing. You're not going to see the actual revenue tool, which has levers that, you know, you'll be able to push and and pull and combine things a little bit more dynamically. What we're seeing is kind of static tables just to show you. These are the variables that are being, that are in the model and that will come out of the model. So thinking about results rather than about sort of the process and the visual look of the model at this point. But keeping that in mind, are the variables right? Are the are the outputs, the things that you expect or want to see? And if not, what are some things that you'd like a little more information on? And questions that you'd like to be able to answer that you want to make sure the variables that we have in there will will help you answer. So we also recognize that this may require some reflection after this meeting. And we're always willing to, you know, take your feedback and suggestions after we leave here today. And happy to have that continue this conversation as we go. We will be providing the slides after this, so you'll have this to 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 look at. So I want to bring everybody back to, I think it was November meeting, we were all together and we we were talking about the core criteria and the secondary criteria. And we've used this as a framework as we've moved through these initial conversations about how we think about evaluating the revenue options and framing the kinds of questions that we want to answer out of the model. So this is that list that that we all discussed of the core criteria. And we'll be stepping through some of these, recognizing that the model is really good at helping us answer some of these, but other types of information we'll be relying on to evaluate other other of the core criteria. For example, legal feasibility and political acceptability are two that are may have some information from the model that are helpful to understand them, but are ultimately kind of evaluated outside of the model structure. Nick, anything you'd like to add here before we move on? I want to kind of keep things moving so that we can get to the core discussion here, but.
Yeah, I think keep on moving. My yard lawn care people just showed up, so it's convenient for me not to be speaking right now.
Awesome. Got airport background noise and lawn care. The symphony of Zoom. Okay. So I want to remind everyone as well that the evaluation that we'll be going through of the revenue options and the revenue structure over time, the model is a key input in helping you make that decision, but it's not the only the only input that you'll be using. The revenue model is a way of organizing quantitative information and getting quantitative outputs. It uses spatial data as inputs, a lot of spatial data to help us understand the the shape of revenue options across geography. And a fine point that Nick, you may want to talk a little bit more about as we get into this. But for the initial results of the options only at this point, we're going to be so that we can compare apples to apples. We're going to be holding the amount of revenue raised constant across them so that we can, knowing that later on, we'll be inserting the actual costs that they that the option or the structure will need to generate for the district. But at this point, the cost estimates that we have are in development and and not a critical point that we're going to be evaluating at this point because we're just really trying to understand how the different options differ in the way that they distribute revenue over populations and over the different variables that we're looking at. Any other input on that, Nick?
Just, just, you know, to further clarify, that's for when we do the first review of model results focusing on a comparison of the individual funding options, general obligation bond, utility fee using this basis, utility fee using this other basis, et cetera, to see what folks think of each of these funding sources independently. We will, that's where we're holding the dollar amount constant. Ultimately, we'll be working with you to tie specific funding tools to specific purposes and activities that the district is going to carry out. And that's when we'll have a much greater variation in terms of how much funding will be coming from each tool and plenty of tools that just get left out as they no longer rise to the top of the priorities for this district.
Yeah. And then layered on top of that, we'll have qualitative information that we can use in our decision. This, a lot of this is going to be really important. A lot of the 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 benefits that the district will provide are important to understand, but it won't necessarily have quantitative information available. And so understanding the qualitative pieces of this in the way that we describe dimensions of equity, political accessibility, will come into your evaluation in a qualitative way. Let's keep that in mind that what you're seeing here today is just a piece of the information that you'll have to rely on that you make these decisions. Okay, so we're going to begin with that first first criteria, financial capacity. And in effect, we've actually already determined that the things that are going into the model are generating enough revenue, have the potential to generate enough revenue, provide sufficient financial capacity. And so they are in the model. We've we've left some out because they wouldn't be able to generate, you know, enough substantial amount of revenue to kind of meet that financial capacity criteria. But it's, they they may still be part of the overall layer cake as we go forward, but we're not spending the time modeling them. So we've we've already answered part of the financial capacity question. What's interesting and what the model will be able to tell us a little bit more detail about is how the the rate varies across the, as we apply the different, the options appropriately across the different geographies. So that that rate will vary because it will be spread across different populations, different parcels, different payer units, and and that will provide us some information about that. Anything else to add here, Nick, to move forward? Okay. A lot of what the model will tell us about is under this broad heading of equity. And I'm going to take a moment here to remind everyone that this is in a really, this is an important part of the conversation and the evaluation. And the equity, we'll be spending an entire meeting and probably some of the next few meetings digging into the dimensions of equity a lot more. We are also going to be conducting, you know, detailed equity and affordability analysis of the options. And so part of that effort, we're we're working closely with the the efforts that are already underway to understand your DEI initiatives and make sure that we're using the same language and defining things in the same way and in a way that is consistent with how the community thinks about these things. So this equity, the model piece of this, this conversation about equity is a small piece, but it does provide data points that help us understand the distribution across of costs across the potentially relevant categories. I see a question there. Do we want to?
Yes, Sarah, it looks like Ben Ro has a question about just checking in on the definitions of floodplain district and sort of the different geographic boundaries you're using here.
Yeah, we actually have a map that we'll come to in a few minutes. Roughly, the the managed floodplain equates to the the area, the current district. The watershed is the collection area that is relevant to thinking about stormwater. And then the district, when we use that word district, it's the new district boundary that is the Multnomah County within the urban growth boundary. Those are the three primary geographies that we're looking at. Okay. So as, so the next few slides, we show the the different dimensions here of equity that we think that the model can really inform, recognizing that there are other dimensions here. So the first one is distribution across customer types. We know that there are different categories and potential rate payers, different kinds of land that are benefiting from the from the services that the district will provide, and they benefit in different ways. So there's lots of different things that we want to recognize as we're designing a revenue structure here across the customer types. So the model will be able to calculate the the way that the revenue is distributed across these these different customer types. And this is how we're defining them at this point. So making some distinctions between single family, multifamily, industrial, commercial vacant, and then several categories of public parcels, which will be treated differently depending on the different revenue structures, options that we are plugging into the model. And the information that can come out of that is the charge by the average charge by rate payer category. And then the percentage of total that that rate payer category is paying. And another piece of this is that the model will have, because it's spatial and it's built on the parcel information, we can develop average characteristics for each of these different rate payer categories, depending on what geography we're looking at. So single family dwellings may look like this on average across the whole district, but they may look like this within the watershed and they may look like something different within the managed floodplain. And that's important in just understanding who's paying and and how how we can ask and answer questions about equity. We'll be able to produce produce results across geography. And right now, we're looking at tying geography and this criteria to the types of beneficiary benefits and the beneficiary areas. Managed floodplain, watershed, district are those three categories that you see again. And you can see within the managed floodplain what percentage of revenue is being generated versus what percentage of revenue the entire district is generating. And so things like that. Okay, and then income is another category that's important for understanding both understanding affordability and in the definitions of affordability that are commonly applied to to utility type payments, those are focused on residential customers. The the analyses are focused on the the burden to residential customers that, and so that's where we're going to be starting here, but exploring ways to potentially look at that outside of the regulatory framework for other types of customers like commercial and industrial. But right now, we can, we have information about income by across the geographies, by different categories of of households. And so that we'll be able to compare the average charges across the different revenue options as a percentage of income on average across the geography that we're looking at. And this is where things get a little bit challenging because, of course, we don't have a database of parcels with the attached income. So we have to be a little bit more, we have to be a little bit more creative with the data that we have at the scales that we're looking at. And, yep, go ahead, Nick.
Oh, so to finish your thought, I was just going to flag that Mary Helen had a comment that I can address when you're when you finish.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I'll get in a few slides here. We show some initial baseline information that that we've mapped across the study area. And so you can start to see the the variation and just some of these parameters that we'll be comparing to like income across the geographies and start to see the spatial relationships. So everything, a lot of what we're looking at here, we'll be able to actually map and show you how it varies across geography versus just, you know, showing you an average for particular geography. So go ahead, Nick, if you want to answer Mary Helen's comment there.
Yeah, so Mary Helen asked, you know, the term average for single family homes, and this applies for the other types of customers as well, can be maybe misleading or confusing because what might be average for a geography might not really look like can be maybe misleading or confusing because what might be average for a geography might not really look like what someone thinks of as a typical home or a typical, you know, commercial customer or what the case is. And so wondering how that average will be determined. And this is something that I've spoken with the folks at Echo about. And the plan is to truly take the mathematical average from the model. So we will look at all the single family customers across the district and sum up all of the charges that they will pay and provide an average of that. And with that, we can also provide what's, what is the average characteristics of that property? How many square feet is the, is the lot? How many square feet is the home itself? What's the assessed value of the home? All those kinds of things. If there are situations where the average within a customer class, the average single family home doesn't really feel like it's a typical home or a good example, or something that you feel is useful for evaluating decisions on customers, we can provide it a different category of customers. So even though we will have the mathematical average for single family homes, if that winds up being not really indicative of the type of homes that we want to see modeled, we can model the same number or the same analysis for a typical home of your neighborhood or something like that. So at this point in time, I wouldn't put the cart before the horse and start trying to identify areas where we're going to need to add new categories of customers or new example customers. But we will show you the information on the attributes of what these average properties are. And if any of them don't look right to you, then we can certainly modify that and come up with a different example customer that we can show on these charts as well.
Yeah. Mary Helen, does that help?
That helps. I guess what came to mind is I've gone through this dance before about average income and I have a million dollar house sitting on a lot smaller than a lot with a mobile home on it. And so to say the average, those two things, and we have Deltawood and a mobile home park to the lowest income residential areas in the city of Portland and five million dollar houses that are selling like hotcakes. So I, that was my concern and I, I think you addressed it and there can be special considerations. And our neighborhood, East Columbia is unique in that way and so is Bridston. So I think in the end, it'll probably come out to some sort of special because obviously the million dollar person could probably care less if their bill goes up $20, but the mobile home person on a bigger lot would lose groceries. So that was for that comment.
And I think also this, this table here that Sarah was showing where we aren't just looking at the types of properties, but for residential customers trying to hone in on the different income thresholds is specifically to try to target that information.
Exactly. Yeah. Okay. I'm going to keep us moving along on the, on the, so are there questions here? We can always come back to this. Lots of, lots of detail embedded here and nuance that we'll have time to explore with you all once we start producing model results. Um, so race and ethnicity is another dimension of equity that we want to be paying attention to. This one is particularly challenging because the data that we have are mapped at a fairly high scale, high level and geographic unit across the study area. And so we'll, we'll need to really be paying attention to different streams of information and this picture that we have of where people reside within the different geographic units that, that will have different options applied to them. So there, there, there aren't awesome ways to come up with single indicators here at a parcel level because we don't know who lives at each parcel. But we will be paying a lot of attention to what we can do with the data at the scale that we have it.
And Sarah, just a quick point on this map, this was what you were referring to earlier for folks asking about the definitions of our three geographic boundaries.
Oh, thank you, Nick.
The green here being the proxy for the managed floodplain, although I saw Kelly put a point in the chat that the managed floodplain will be officially defined by the, the district board. The blue being the, the watershed and then the red being the full district.
Okay. And a data table that might help us to, to look at these in a little bit more systematic way is understanding the revenue options and the rate per pair within the geography. And then within that geography, we can calculate a share of minority population within geography broadly. But that may not, again, be representative of certain pockets within that that have higher proportions. And we want to pay attention to that. The average may not be the, the all in and all of the share. You're not going to be all in and all of this, of this evaluation of this particular variable. Okay. And then here's a, another picture of how median household income that we were talking about before mapped out. And then this is moving into a related but separate criteria that we have. And that is progressive structures, the tools rate structured so that low, those with lower incomes pay a lower proportion of earnings. Again, we'll have to pay attention to this based on the spatial data and where the, how the median household income is distributed across the different study areas that we're looking at. Because we don't have information, as far as we understand right now, about the actual median household income of individual parcels or rate payers specifically to, to calculate that. So we're looking at patterns and relationships. Okay. And the final, I believe the final core criteria is ease of implementation. And this gets to some of the variables about, uh, some of the questions about how logistically challenging or costly with implementation of a particular, particular option B, is there a straightforward way to structure it and implement it? Or is it going to require a lot of interpretation and recalculation and agreement over time that we'll have to, that could increase the cost of actually implementing it? So we have some variables that we're going to be building into the model results. So you'll, the, the information that we've talked about before will reflect the cost of some of these implementation considerations. So, you know, how much does it cost to establish it and calculate the, the, the rate, the rates? What are the other transaction costs that may be relevant? The revenue collected as a percentage of revenue charged, you know, how, is there a mechanism to make sure that people are paying and that we're, and you're collecting on it? And what is the cost to, to, to collect? And then, you know, what is the, what are the requirements for needing to create new IGAs? And there's a lot of differences here between, for instance, the utility fee and a, you know, a, a property tax. So there are, depending on what revenue options end up in the model, these, these will vary across them. And we just want to make sure that we're capturing that. And we're going to be going to the tag for input on these specific things and ways to think about them over the next month or so.
Sarah and Nick Corky had a question here on, I think, the previous topic that whether you can set rates according to disposable income. Can you respond to that?
Let's see.
Mark, are you here? Do you want to?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I don't know about the legality. I was thinking about how quite a bit of the evolution of at least water affordability testing has moved towards looking at household expenses and variation in household budgets and the expenses across that. I, I don't know what the legality is, but I could see how we could identify differences in affordability and then maybe use that as a basis for adjustment. But I wouldn't want to go too far out on that limb right now. I don't know if anyone else, it might be others here on the meeting that know more about the options there.
I, Mark, I think that the simplest way that folks have tried to structure taxes like this, essentially tax on disposable income, is to impose a, a personal income tax that only kicks in on incomes above a certain threshold. So for households, you know, above a hundred thousand dollars a year, recognizing that income below that is often, you know, folks living paycheck to paycheck. So, so that is an option. And I think personal income tax was on the original list of potential tools that were considered fall or winter, but I don't believe that personal income made it to the shortlist of tools that are interested in. So I think.
That was dismissed.
Okay.
I think an alternative way to look at it might be some kind of a rate relief program.
Yes, exactly. And that's a great point, Kelly, because the options that we're looking at here will lead to us being identifying where there are digital equity issues that we need to address. And then when we get to the rate structure, we'll be able to think about what are the mitigation, the tools that we can use to help mitigate some of those that aren't embedded in the specific options that we have. But there are other tools that are outside of this that we'll be able to follow in as we move through this process.
Okay. Sarah, do you have one or two more here, I think?
We can move through these two really quickly to get to discussion. We've talked about political acceptability. This is really evaluated outside of the scope of the model and you all are paying attention to that. And we've already talked a lot about that as we've gone through the screening process to get the options that we want to move forward with modeling and the ones that we've taken out of contention like the income tax. And then the next slide addresses the legal feasibility. Again, something that Kelly is helping, all of you, Kelly and counselor are helping all of you sort through and helping us to understand as we design the options, we want to make sure that they're designed in a way that is legal to implement. So all of that is coming in and is reflected in, you know, what's coming out of the model. Okay. Then we had a series of secondary criteria that the model, for the most part, these things are already reflected again in the way that we're designing the different options that will go in a way that they'll go into the model. But there are a few things within these secondary criteria that the model will be able to tell us more about. So the first two, suitability of purpose and geographic suitability really get to us paying attention to that nexus issue, the relationship and suitability of purpose between those who've been, or the, the services, service being, sorry, you can jump to the next slide, but the, the service being delivered and the, and the revenue being generated for it and who's paying. So that's a nexus issue. And then the next slide geographic suitability, again, thinking about the geographic scope of the service being provided and the where, and where that revenue option is being levied across which population. So those two are already kind of covered in the way that these things are being designed and operationalized within the model on a geographic basis. Then we get to fairness, which is related to some of the things that we'll be evaluating, but it really is likely to have many definitions. All of you probably come to this with your own idea of what fairness means. And the model can help us to answer some of those questions that arise from it. It's not going to be our primary focus, but because of the way that the model is designed, we will be able to, to present results in different ways beyond what we've just talked about. And one of those ways might be distribution of charges by jurisdiction, not the geographies that we've defined as being most relevant for designing and implementing the fees, but may help us to understand some distributional questions that come up later. Then we've already talked about customer type and thinking about fairness in the way that we think about averages that, that pop out. And what are the averages, a fair way to look at that distribution? And, and then another way that people might think about fairness is how does what I'm being charged under this new model or new structure compared to what I'm existing, what I'm paying now. And we will have baseline information across the geographies about what people are already paying, both those who pay, those who are within the districts and pay a direct fee and those who may be paying indirectly and not knowing it through current transfers and IGAs that are in place. So we'll be capturing as much of that as we can quantitatively and be able to provide some information about that. Okay. And then simplicity and transparency, all of these revenue options are going to require a certain amount of, you know, operationalizing each year, potentially recalculating who's going to be actually collecting the money and we're working and, and getting to those implementation issues that we're on our little step up, step up, uh, graphic. And as Sarah and Colin had mentioned, we're already talking about the, trying to begin developing answers to some of those questions, those design questions that are coming up later. And a lot of that falls under the simplicity and transparency criteria. Okay.
And just for Counselor Craddock's benefit, yes, if we were going to collect the money ourselves, we'd have to set up a system to do that. We're currently working with others to try and find a way to pull that off. So in a way Metro is collecting revenue for the homeless services measure. You guys are doing that yourselves.
Yeah, City of Portland does it for us.
So that was a lot, friends. And I'm going to actually take the, so that we can see each other a little better here. Take the questions that Sarah asked us to focus on in discussion and pop them in the chat here instead of having us look at the slides. We've had quite a bit of reflection, but we have another 10 minutes or so here if we want to take a few minutes to provide feedback to the Echo team of, of what's missing here. What can we do as we actually are able to insert specific model or revenue options into this model? What can we do to make the results easy to interpret? And have you seen any gaps where, where we might not be planning to provide you information that you'd really like to see?
And, and we know this is a lot of technical stuff to digest and you just saw the slides today. We don't need your final answers on this today. So if you want to chew on this and you have thoughts and suggestions and questions for us in the coming days, by all means, continue to send us feedback.
And also we'll be working through a lot of the questions that have come up as a result of this with the, the tag group. And you all are, I believe, CC'd on the information that goes to the tag or will be calling. That's right. And so you'll, you'll be able to kind of watch and participate in some of those, that further development. This is the, the kickoff to all of that.
Gareth Molander.
I was just saying, I'd like to be able to see those questions that are posed to the tag and who's on the technical advisory group and what their calls are. Thank you.
You can do that. Corky?
No, I was just going to say, as long as all the comments that were in the chat, all those questions are addressed, you know, such as the cost of collection, for example, then I think it's pretty well set up.
Okay. Thank you, friends. Any other feedback for the team here? Blinded them with science, Sarah, or with economics?
I hope you all are getting excited about seeing actual results.
Yeah, we're just. Attention here.
Yes.
Clearly.
I think you're doing a really good job. It's, it's amazing how complex this is, more so than many other jurisdictions. It's with all, with the geographic differences, the income differences. Well, it's, it's complex.
Yeah, it is a lot to take in and put together and make sense of.
You know, one of the things that will enable us to sell this to the public is if we have a, a smaller model with, that has the variables so that they can just sit in and say, well, my home is assessed at this and I've got this many square feet. Now, what is my utility fee? So something that is the same basis that you're using will be an effective way for us to say, okay, for those people that are interested, here's how you calculate it.
Yeah. And, and right now the model is set up to only show results in the aggregate and for example, customers. But when we come back with those model results, a couple of meetings from now, you know, if, if folks believe that we're going to need to show something at a more granular level of detail that's more accessible for folks to look up individual properties, by all means, let us know that. That's, that's not in our scope, but we have built models like that before. The key functionality of our model stays the same. It would just take some more time and effort from the Echo Northwest folks to be able to translate the core of this model into a web-based, you know, property lookup version so that people could access it and look up the, the details of individual properties.
Thanks, Nick. Corky?
I would suspect that that would be a very useful tool when it comes time to pitch this to the public. If, if we had it sooner, that'd be great too, but I, I, you know, somebody correct me if I'm wrong there, but I think if you're asking the folks to vote on it, I think it's, would be very helpful for them to be able to plug in and say, this is what it's going to do to me.
So since that's been asked for twice at this meeting, I think we will go ahead and draft up a little proposal for how the scope of work could be amended to accommodate that request. And then we'll talk with staff about what it's going to take to make that happen.
Okay. Jim, did you want to put something in or are you just still unmuted from earlier?
I'm unmuted. I wanted to invite Evan to share news of earlier today.
Yeah, Colin had asked me to make sure. Actually, I think Colin was going to provide the update, but we, we did see the exciting news on email right before the meeting. Yeah, Colin had asked me to make sure, actually, I think Colin was going to provide the update, but we did see the exciting news on email right before the meeting. So I definitely want to leave space for them.
Yeah, thank you, Jim and Sarah. So some exciting news, House Bill 4067 passed through the House. It was approved unanimously. Just as a reminder, this is the bill that does some housekeeping for the ORS 550, which established the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District Board, your board. And it allows fundamentally that timeline that we walked through is only possible with the passage of this bill. And so this is a really important step moving towards that passage. It clarifies the role of the initial board, allows for referral of the geo bond and other things that allow this timeline to function, as well as a number of other housekeeping pieces. So it was unanimously referred from the House Veterans and Emergency Management Committee up to the House floor. It was voted today with a unanimous unanimous vote of 57 to zero. And the next steps are that will, not exactly sure which committee it will land in, but we are hopeful that it will land in the Senate Veterans and Emergency Preparedness Committee and hopefully move through the Senate in a similar fashion. Want to give special thanks to Senator Frederick Gorsick and Rep. Hudson and Rep. Nelson, who submitted a House floor letter to all members in support of that. Also, many of your organizations both lobbied and submitted letters of support. So huge thanks to all the submitted letters. And then Jim gave really great testimony that really clearly defined it. So excellent job, Jim. I want to give a special shout out to Evan, who really is the mastermind behind all of this. So great work, everyone, and we'll keep you all updated and move forward in the Senate. So thanks.
That's great. Congratulations, you guys. Any questions or comments on the legislative update? All right, I'll talk about some next steps then. I think we've already said all this stuff. I'll be real quick then, we can give you time to get a drink of tea before your next meeting. Sarah, I think I'll do this.
Go for it.
This is the last, this is the starting point of the list, that you're going to make sure that everybody in this in this in the Fall Board, per Eric's request, gets the sort of topics that you're working on a memo, I understand, with the technical advisory group to ask some technical questions and ask for feedback on this set of topics, which I won't read to you all. Next board meetings next Tuesday. We'll space these out a little further in the future so that we can, you can get a little break from us in between meetings and come back fresh. And the next revenue work meeting will be on March 9. And if you do the business action that you anticipate on the vote that you anticipate on Tuesday, then Nick believes he'll be able to start sharing initial model results at the March 9 meeting, which, again, we hopefully have brought an appropriate amount of tension, positive tension around Nick. Not negative tension, positive tension. Any questions before we let you go for the day?
Is that next meeting of this at 1 o'clock again on the night?
It's a standard time, right, Colin?
Yeah, so in the next day or two, you should have meeting invites coming for 1:00 to 2:30. And I think it's March 9, and then whatever the corresponding day, which I think is a Wednesday, the second Wednesday of the month going through June. So you can, but hold on those, but you'll also get the calendar invite coming through the next couple of days. Thanks for your patience on it, and we'll have that all the way through June and then reconvene about the timing of those meetings.
Okay, friends, anything else for the good of the order? Hey, am I free to, am I free to dismiss class, Colin and Jim? All right, have a great Wednesday afternoon and rest of your week, y'all. Take care and thanks for your time and attention today.
Bye.
Hey, Sarah. Is this your Zoom meeting?